We're not lying.
Sorry. We're trying to fix something here.
We're not lying.
So you changed the...
Pressures are moving up. Uh, we will assess motion that someone would like to bring on forward.
And then we, um...
Make the changes as Mr. Snoll suggested and as I indicated my preference to be as being more in compliant with what was actually discussed at the October 3 zoning meeting. And I also suggest that we, um, my motion is, is that we add that, um, video be included with the minutes.
We have a first by Ms. Baker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Pena. All in favor? That was agenda item, uh, number two. The time is now approximately 7:13 PM. Agenda item number three, would like to go ahead and open the public hearing on proposed amendments from the zoning review committee regarding revisions to chapter 50 of the code of ordinances. Would like to call up, please, the persons who desire to speak, and thank you very much for, uh, signing up here. Uh, Richard and Becky Smith. If you could re-identify yourself for the audience and your address, please.
Sure. Richard and Becky Smith, 206 Atler, Atler Drive.
Um, okay. Well, I have been in contact...
Excuse me. Could you get a little closer to the microphone?
Okay.
Or move it towards you or...
Um, uh...
I don't think the audience can hear you.
Okay. Is that better?
It's great.
Okay. Um, I have, uh, carefully gone over each page of the draft for the short-term rental, and I have some pages that are highlighted with things that are troubling to me. Uh, in some cases, they're troubling because they pose quite a burden on vacation homeowners or potential, we don't have one yet, uh, such as my husband and I. Uh, there's some items that, uh, pose burdens, and I believe I can say, knowing this business and having had a rental home for eight years, uh, some of these things that are asked for are really of no use to the city of Castle Hills. They will not help the city to, to, uh, give oversight of this new or existing business that's in Castle Hills. Uh, one of them in particular is the requirement that we submit meets and bounds, and I had to Google that to find out what that meant. And that's, uh, boundaries with using a compass and a point of starting point, reference. Uh, it would be much nicer just to ask for the address of the proposed, uh, short-term rental, and then it'll also asks for owners to submit a deed. This home was my parents'. They bought it in 1972. Uh, I suppose there is a deed somewhere. Uh, again, I don't see how that'll help the city of Castle Hills in its oversight of my property. Um, there's a number of things, um, that are not required here that would be very useful to the city in managing these properties, and I'll just suggest some of them. Instead of sketches of the bedrooms and so on, pictures of the property. All of us have very well-done, even professionally done, pictures of every room, even the bathrooms. You get a good idea of what the property looks like with the pictures, and we have those. That would be useful. Second thing that the city would, uh, could make good use of and is not required is a calendar of reservations. That way, you can look at any property and see in any particular month what days are gonna be rented, what weeks or weekends. That could have several uses. The city could get a call from somebody on the street saying they hear a lot of noise down the street. It would be very easy to look at the calendar and say, "Oh, that property is vacant right now, so it must be another house. Will have to be checked." That could be very useful. Uh, the third thing that hasn't been required here is rental reviews. People that stay in these homes are very, they have high expectations, and if an owner doesn't have the place clean, if it is not well-run, if their yard and the landscaping isn't nice, that'll be in the reviews. They won't get five stars. There's quite a few things that could be useful, and those are readily available. All these things are usually right there on the HomeAway, uh, ad that that person has, and so all of us will have a HomeAway or Airbnb number. So I would say that that should be included. Remove meets and bounds and things like that, deeds. Um, occupancy limits. The way we ran our home for six, for eight years, this doesn't work, and here's why. When I get a call that somebody wants to come for a weekend because somebody's graduating from Lackland or something, I find out who's coming. A young man or woman's parents, a sister, an aunt, an uncle, a younger brother. I know the names of the people. I create the contract for that stay. So the occupancy limit are the people that, that I know are going to be there. Whether the previous group had two more people or two less is no business of the people that are going to be there on that particular day. So the occupancy limits are just those people. I don't, I don't want them to see a sign on the door that says maximum occupancy eight or 10. If they're only five, I don't want them to say, "You know, well, let's call Cousin Joe. They can have more people here." That doesn't work. But these things were probably not created by somebody that knows some of the details of how the businesses run. So I have several other things. So I would like to have the opportunity to sit down as owners to discuss what will help the city to do its job better without putting undue burden on, uh, us property owners. And so a lot of this is fine. A lot of it is fine. But I can tell, and I've heard that it's just borrowed from another city, and so, and I don't think that person really knew as much about the running of a vac, uh, second, uh, short-term rental as they could've known. I can just tell. So, can be improved. That's our comments. Sure.
Um, by chance, could you leave those suggestions so that we can review them at some point?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Booth. Uh, next, please, Mr. Wayne Carter of 125 South Winston Lane.
Good evening, folks. Want to thank you for your community service volunteering. My name is Wayne Carter at 125 South Winston Lane. I grew up in this home, starting in 1946. I'd like to say to y'all tonight, to save some time on this meeting, any type of home rental in a neighborhood like Airbnb is a total disaster. But let me expound upon that a little bit. I lived across the street from one that has finally shut down. When it started, I called up the owner that I've known since he built the home, Jorge Berto, about 10 or 15 years ago, and I said, "Jorge, there's five checkmarks, five bullet points on the Airbnb site that says you're not supposed to do. One of them is no parties or events. Jorge, every weekend, there's anywhere from 50 to 150 cars parked all up and down our street, and they try to make a deal with the Baptist church to use part of that overflow parking lot." He said, "Wayne, I know I'm having trouble with the contract. I can't seem to get out of it." Uh, I said, "Jorge, you gotta do something." When you went onto the website and looked at this property, it was quoted as the most favorable party house in Bear County on the web. The ambiance, the backyard trees, the pool, the big open room. Yes, it's a nice house. I told Jorge, "You helped this neighborhood try to maintain its character for the last 20 years in dealing with the church, the parking lot, tree trimmers we had to shut down that were starting a home-based business, one that grew to 11, Basis Charter School, the traffic. We've been, we have been locked into a battle about every few years for the last 22 years. Wayne, I'll try to do something about it. I'll try to do something about it." Then, one evening during the summer, I've got both garage doors open. I'm in there painting, and I noticed the parties filling up. I don't know who I'm gonna offend tonight, but the occupants were the ones having to walk like this because their pants were below their whatever, and they would come over across the street and look at me. Three men. And I kept, started, they watched me at 8:30, 10:30, and 12:30. It's a matter of record. Called up the police dispatcher because I felt a little uncomfortable. They just stared at me. Now, why, why, if it's a party going over there, why are they looking at a neighbor across the street? So, policeman came up, found some problems or whatever, asked them to shut it down. But this went on, folks, for, oh, a year or so. And as I said at the beginning, it was a nightmare. I'll be the first one to, to agree with a home-based business as it's defined. One, where you're working in home, it's not interfering with the neighborhood, your next-door neighbors, traffic, or whatever. I don't, I don't want to encumber anyone from using their home where it's allowed. A rental, if you, we, Castle Hills, doesn't put the hammer down on any parties or events, period. When San Antonio finally, with all the pressure that they were having for the same thing, they came out last year with a lame ordinance. Oh, it assesses them like $150 or something like that. The city drives no benefit of taxes. Taxes stay the same unless that is incorporated, but then it's probably where you're ostracized, not ostracized, where you're picking on one person instead of all. But I just got into town, hour and a half ago, my neighbor told me about the meeting. I haven't even looked at the ordinance or the draft copy. No parties or events. Make it good for Castle Hills and make it good for neighbors like me that we don't have to put up with something like that again. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Could please, J., I think I'm reading this correctly, J. D. Castrigiana, 128 South Winston Lane.
Correct.
Hopefully I said that correctly, sir.
You did it correctly. Um, I just found out about this probably about 20 minutes ago, and so I rushed over here. So I'm more of a witness as to, uh, what happens with the Airbnbs. Airbnb itself does the renting. They tell you they're screening, but there is no screening from what I can see. So here's what I witnessed, uh, I guess for a year and a half ago, for probably about a year. This particular one got shut down. My home sits probably 25 or 30 feet higher than where the Airbnb was at. Every conceivable thing happened. So let's begin with what? A mother rents one, and here comes the teenagers. Why? Do I know? Because the mother's asking for permission if she can be in my driveway, says she can sort of keep the peace. Okay, there's alcohol, and it went on and went on and went on. Let's see. A- as I recall it, there was a minimum of 19 calls to the police over, you know, a period of time. Let's see. There was the, uh, the people from Mexico, I'm not saying anything bad there, uh, who came with rifles and music and everything in the backyard. One incident. Uh, another one was a, a group of, uh, guys and girls. They're out in the back. They're playing poker. Whoever loses has to be nude and dive from the diving board into the pool, but that was just part of it. Uh, then, again, not saying anything, no, I don't even go into the others. Uh, what else was there? It's nothing for there to be minimum of 25 to 50 cars. Nothing. Absolutely nothing. Blocking everybody. Nobody knows where they're coming or going. People knocking on doors. They don't have the correct address. It's nothing. I mean, it was just a common practice, constantly calling the police. Okay, the music. It got to the point to, to make it simple for the police, whether it be, I think the ordinance is 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock at night. Uh, those sound detectors, they'd come to my house so they could go to the fence, so they could see what the sound level was, in order to be able to, um, give them a violation. I don't even know if the violation's to the people. You know what? I just remember the policeman would always say, "Well, it's really a violation to the homeowner, the person who actually owns it." The homeowners just kind of turn it over to Airbnb. They just want their check. Uh, and I understand it. I get, I, I, you know, it's for profit. It's a business. It's a business, any way you want to look at it. Now, yeah, we can paint other pictures, like as if we were in Europe, and somebody lives in this apartment over here. They can monitor who comes in. And this is not Europe. That's not the way that is. A homeowner is generally away. Nowhere near the property has no earthly idea what's going on, and I think Airbnb takes care of the repairs and so forth. Now, this particular, um, this is an odd one. This particular Airbnb, we're on a septic tank when you live over in our area. All of us are. We're all on septic tanks. I can't imagine, begin to tell you the times that the, uh, plumbers were there, you know, to have to do repairs and so forth. Uh, you never know. You, you have, no one can control this thing. Whether there's 10 people there, I never saw anything with, we had it once in a while. Some hunters came in. They wanted to spend the weekend, you know, and they took off, and that was rare. But they behaved themselves. But the majority of the time, you can go back and look at the records. I don't have to invent any of this. It got shut, shut down because of that. There is no oversight. There is no control. Nothing. Zero. That's the reason for all of the police calls, and I'm not the only one that called. It's just countless. I got caught a little bit off-guard. I could go on with another 10 or 15 types of situations that took place there. Uh, you'd have people that would come in, they'd rent it, not for a weekend, just for one night is what it is. They're gone the next day. Uh, and, and the trash. Oh, yeah, I remember about the trash now. Um, 16 trashcans. If you think about it out on the street, if you think of about the wind, the dogs, the coons, and everything else knocking them over, there's nobody there to clean it up. It stays there until their cleanup people come in a day or two or three, or whatever the case might be. It goes on and on and on and on. Uh, there's a whole lot more. Um, i- if you really had the oversight from an owner, and the owner was there, and they're renting, they've got a five-bedroom home, four bedrooms, whatever it is, and they're there, and they can screen them, and they're permitting them to come into their homes. But that's not what this is all about when it gets to Airbnb. I'm sure there's some good people out there, but this is a for-profit business. That's the way it is. Some people would like to have four or five of them. Same thing, you know, just so that they can pay some maintenance people to go around and pick up the trash, you know, and so forth. Uh, I'm surprised that there wasn't a major emergency, whether it be somebody was really ill or a fire or whatever it is, uh, you know, because it's, it's, it's secluded and it's, uh, kept out of the public view, except at night. You have no idea in the day, but at night, oh, does it come alive. Really does. So anyways, that's what I experienced. I was there. Um, it was one, you, you'd, no one rents on a, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. They only rent on a Friday night, Saturday night, or a Sunday night, and generally, they're not taking the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. If they did take the Friday, it's to prepare for Saturday, and they are out of there on Sunday. That's what I witnessed. You'd have your hands full on this one. And you know, we wouldn't be the only city, but, uh, other people have had a lot more practice. You should learn from them, and let's just avoid a, uh, real can of worms. It won't go away. I'm telling you that now. We'll be sitting up here, everybody be mad, and we'll have these ordinances and that they're protected. Uh, yeah, then we gotta live with it. You don't. We do. That's it. That's all I can tell you. Thank you. Oh, and your city manager, oh, now he should be up here really telling you it was all alike because he was there. Where's our lawyer? Is this our lawyer? He should know. It's a business. It's not the getaway plan. It's a business. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, we have the folks who had signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
That would be in the discretion of the commission, Mr. Chair.
Um, commissioners, uh, would you allow? Absolutely, then, commissioners.
Well, it's very distressing to hear the kind of stories that these gentlemen have shared. Uh, to take a calm neighborhood where people have known each other for years and create disruption and noise and trash is a terrible, terrible thing, and I agree with them. And we experienced that when we had our little home that we lived in and then outgrew and made a vacation home over off of McCullough. Uh, our vacation home business was going well, and then the lady next door to me, whom I'd known for years, passed away, an older lady, and that home became a rental, a long-term rental property. Then my elderly neighbor on the other side passed away, and the same man bought that home too. So I was a vacation home with a long-term rental on each side. The home on the right first was rented by college students. Those college students began to have parties just about every weekend. We tried to talk to them, and they were very rude to me. We avoided for some months them disturbing my renters, who we rented to families only, just because we knew they would treat the property correctly. The neighborhood across the street also scolded them for blocking her driveway and making noise. And these, it was a house full of boys. I guess it was a frat house. They threw a bunch of used condoms in her front yard, beer cans, uh, bottles, and were very, very rude. And the house at the other side was all girls, and some interesting things happened between those two homes. I could no longer tell the people renting my home, who usually came with young children, that this was a quiet, family-friendly neighborhood because of these two long-term rentals on each side. And our reviews went down because people will always give an honest review, and they said, "It's too bad. The Smiths are very nice, and their home's lovely," which you might be up until four because of what's going on next door. And that ruined our business. So I just want to say, it doesn't make sense. There's no logic to writing ordinances thinking or focusing only on one particular incident, one particular person who's mismanaged the business that they had. The man that was on each side of my home, that was a business. He had 20 homes like that, and he told me, "The reason I get college students is their parents always pay the rent because they don't want their kids kicked out." So, we were out of luck there. So, uh, this must reflect the totality of what is possible with these homes, and I think the vast majority are very well-managed. Because as you, as I've mentioned previously to this group, we have put probably $175,000 in this home that we propose to rent. I do not want anybody to abuse this property, uh, because that's, that's my retirement. And yes, it will be a business, but there won't be weeds, and there won't be noise, and I can bring neighbors from my previous neighborhood to stand here and tell you that what I'm saying is true. So, for every bad story, I'm sure there's dozens of good ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, would anybody else, last chance, anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am. If you could, uh, please state your name and your address.
My name is Nancy McDermuth, and I live at 100 East Castle Lane. And I'm here because I didn't know there was a, an Airbnb across the street. I wondered why there was all this incessant, what do you call it, those gas leaf blowers? I mean, it was crazy. I had been in that house for 30 years, and nobody ever did that. Because we have more trees than anybody else. It's at the bottom of the hill. So, I was absolutely stunned when I found out why they were doing this constantly. I was monitoring because I thought, either I'm going crazy, or this is really happening. And so, I monitored it, and I was just horrified because I thought, "This is really happening, and I can't take it anymore." And sure enough, I found out that it was an Airbnb. Otherwise, I, I just honestly, I wrote the people that lived, that owned that property, which lived next door. I don't know who they were. I just wrote a letter on behalf of the rest of the, my neighbors and my family, and I said, "Dear neighbors," and then I proceeded to say to them, "Um, this, I, a lot of us have been here for decades, and this has never happened before. Why are you doing this? You're ruining the character and the quiet, peaceful tranquility of this neighborhood. We moved here years ago. We sacrificed to buy into this place, and then, you know, it's being ruined by you." I had no idea who these people were, but I just, you know, wanted to keep it that way. I thought, you know, I don't want to get personal, but something has to be done. And I thought, "This is just untenable. I just, we just cannot take it." Spoke to the neighbors. They agreed, and so called, called the police, and they said, "Well, it's 85 decibels." Yes, it's 85 blaring decibels constantly. So I thought, "Nobody else would put up with this. This is insane. I put up with it long enough." Well, there has been nothing I could do about it. I found out, I, the way I found out that it was an Airbnb is I talked, when I was talking to the neighbors. I said, "Are you sick to death of this? This is going, this is driving me crazy. It's driving my family crazy. My son works at ICU. He needs his rest, and he's not getting it, and I work from home, and I can't even think because this thing is blaring. The amplitude is absolutely brain-numbing." So, I, absolute, this is where I'm at. So, I'm here to tell you that one of the unexpected problems that has come out of this Airbnb is this excessive noise. They do not let one leaf sit on the ground. And where I live, we, where I live, we have so many trees. We have more trees than anybody, and we have leaves everywhere because we just, we just mulch them. That's the only way to get by. We just mulch our leaves. And this maniac, I mean, sorry, this person that's been hired by these people, uh, just is over there constantly blowing every leaf. Now, I bet you haven't heard that one. I bet you haven't heard that one before. Have you? No. No. It's absolutely atrocious. It's unbelievable. And then, to top it off, you won't believe this, you will not believe it. I found out who owns it. Anybody know who I'm talking about? Our new alderman, Mr. May, and his partner, Mr. Lopez. Is that a shocker, or is that a shocker? I found out by accident. When they sent those campaign cards, I looked at the address, and I thought, "Huh, this is the, these are the people I wrote to." I didn't know who they were. That's who they were. They're the owners. And I wrote them and told them and complained. I didn't even know it was them. I just said, "Dear neighbors." I was very polite. I was very polite, but firm, that they're wrecking the neighborhood and the peace and tranquility that I've had for 30 years. They are ruining it. And guess what? Nothing changed. It was 16 times one month, 11 times last month. I mean, it's just unbelievable. And that's all I can tell you. That's all I can say. It's just unbelievable. Thank you for listening to me. I feel better. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McDermott. All right, um, anyone else? The time is approximately 7:42 PM. We are closing the public hearing. The time is still approximately 7:42 PM. Agenda item number four. Discussion and possible action on a recommendation to the City Council on amendments to Chapter 50 of the Code of Ordinances based on recommendations from the Zoning Review Committee. Commissioners, this is your time for open discussion. Commissioners, I'd like to go ahead and make a, just share a bit. I know that we can't engage per se on the prior agenda item, but under this, the wealth of information that is under this zoning review committee piece, last meeting, we opened this up and had this on the, on the agenda. And we did advance forward a section of this, uh, which happened to be a section on the short-term rentals. That was advanced, uh, forward to allow the City Council to put it on their agenda. And unless I'm mistaken, I don't think that it was on their agenda the last meeting. But we did make our recommendations in regards to that, and, uh... In regard, well, basically, I don't want to get into the last item, but in regards to that, we did attempt to move it forward. So, um, any additional discussion by the governing body will have to take place. There any changes that they want to make will come for that particular item under zoning review committee as an example. So I just wanted to share that and bring that to light just one more time, the actions that we took last meeting. Commissioners, again, this is your time for open discussion.
I have, um, a question about, I'm looking on the draft of, it's called Information Section, um, documents that the owners are required to provide. It's under required fees. Um, and then there's... Oh, no, mine's not listed. It's done... It's the application, draft application, short-term rental permit application. And then there's a draft right beyond that called Information Section. Keep these documents for your records. Right. Just, sometimes things aren't always in order for everybody.
There are no page numbers, so it gets a little tricky.
Within the packet is the ordinance, and then behind the ordinance is the actual application.
The Information Section?
I don't remember seeing the section, and it's all highlighted on my, mine. Um, the fee for late application, does that apply? I guess my question is, I don't remember discussing when late fee application would apply, and if there's any notation on any of the information provided to the applicants on when they would be subject to a late application fee. I thought it was, we give them a grace period, and then if people don't apply, then that's when this...
I think that's as a result of the, the not complying and pulling the permits. Similar to what we have now with other permits, and I think, um, we captured that from last meeting. I think Ms. Pena had mentioned that, as far as the double fee. Um, that's as a result, if you didn't come in and actually...
Sign up in time.
Sign up and, and get an application and get an actual permit, and we find out that you're operating out of compliance. Just like anything in residential permits or commercial permits we do.
Is it written anywhere in this, the rest of the document? I really only looked at kind of the highlighted new portions.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is.
Great, thank you.
What, what, although the commission voted at the November meeting, as the chair has said, um, to move this forward, it was moving it forward provided that certain revisions were made, including that comment, um, about the application fee. So one of the things that was done, um, was to add a phrase in the section, I think it was formerly Section 50-503, which says, "Short-term rental permit registration fee and application." And so at the beginning of that paragraph, that section, the statement was added, "Prior to renting real property as a short-term rental, an applicant shall do the application." So if someone is renting as a short-term rental without having followed the application process, then by definition, that's going to be someone who will be subject to the late application fee, um, which was in accordance with, um, one of the recommendations made at the November meeting. Similarly, um, there were three or four other administrative changes that were made consistent with recommendations that came from the commission at the November meeting. And finally, um, on my final review, I noticed that the numbering sequence was out of order. The numbering sequence where the original ordinance that the commission looked at started it with number 50-100, um, that would have put it under the AA zoning district regulations. So I suggested to the city manager that we move the short-term rental provisions to a separate standalone section and begin the numbering with 50-516, where it would fit in the sequence. Um, among other reasons, besides getting it out of the, where someone could construe it to only apply to the AA district, um, it also seemed to me that by setting it aside in its own specific section of the zoning ordinance would make it easier for both, um, the governing body, this commission, and owners of potential short-term rental properties to see exactly where the city's regulations were located. And i-if I may, Mr. Chairman, if, if the commission will indulge, there is one new bit of information, um, that was not available to the commission at the meeting at the beginning of November on November 5th. And that information is that the, um, Third District Court of Appeals of the State of Texas, uh, last Wednesday on November 27th, um, rendered an opinion in regard to the City of Austin's short-term rental ordinance. And in their opinion, struck down two significant sections of the Austin ordinance. Um, one of those sections is not relevant to Castle Hills, because this commission did not act to restrict short-term rentals to only owner-occupied properties. In Austin, they had a Type 1, uh, short-term rental, which was an owner-occupied short-term rental, like renting a bedroom to someone. Um, and they had a Type 2 short-term rental, which was a rental of an entire property, um, where the owner was not occupying it. And the Austin ordinance said that the Type 2 short-term rentals, uh, could no longer be done after, I believe it was December 31 of 2021. Their ordinance was passed in 2016. Um, the Court of Appeals struck down that section, um, on constitutional grounds. The other section that the Court of Appeals addressed was a section where the City of Austin, in its short-term rental ordinance, prohibited weddings or other group-type events at a short-term rental. And the Court of Appeals, uh, ruled that provision to be unconstitutional as a violation of both the First Amendment to the United States Constitution and a section of the, uh, of Article 1 of the Texas Constitution, both of which protect the right of assembly. There are some, there is one section, I mean, our ordinance, uh, one section in the proposed ordinance, and one section in the application, um, that are implicated by this appellate court decision. This appellate court decision is not final, just rendered seven days, six days ago. So both the, um, the, uh, the property owners who filed the lawsuit, or the State of Texas, which intervened in it, or the City of Austin, could bring this case, uh, to the Texas Supreme Court. They could ask the Court of Appeals for a rehearing. Or they could go to the Supreme Court, ask the Supreme Court to consider this case. Um, to my knowledge, the Supreme Court has considered short-term rentals and regulation of short-term rentals by homeowners associations. But I don't believe there's a case directly on point in regard to a short-term rental ordinance by a city. So that enhances the likelihood that the Supreme Court might consider it. But the Supreme Court accepts maybe 10% of the cases that it's asked to hear, the Texas Supreme Court. But the, um, ordinance, um, in what is now Section 50-520, on page 3 of the proposed ordinance, had a section that says that, um, as an operational requirement, there should be notification that all functions such as weddings, parties, or other gatherings are prohibited at the short-term rental, excepting short-term rentals located in the G or H zoning districts. And those are general business and even less intense, or, excuse me, more intense zoning districts, G or H. Um, effectively, this provision would prohibit someone using an Airbnb for the kind of events that Mr. Carter and Mr. Costin-Yana described. Um, but that prohibition might be violation of both the United States Constitution, First Amendment, um, and, um, Section 27 of Article 1 of the Texas Constitution. And I did want to bring that to the attention of the commission. Uh, as I said, this is, um, very new, um, uh, information. Um, and we won't know whether any party is appealing, going to appeal this or take it to the Supreme Court, ask, even ask the Supreme Court to consider it for probably 45 days. And if they do, then it, it would be on the Supreme Court's calendar um, in whatever stages the Supreme Court wants it to go. Um, but could easily be a year or longer before we have a definitive ruling on whether what the Austin Court of Appeals did, um, to the Austin ordinance would be something the Supreme Court would agree with or not agree with. But again, I thought it was relevant to bring it to the commission's attention, since it is so timely. And, um, I'd be glad to answer other questions from the commission if and, and when appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall.
You have one to, you might want to stay up there.
Yeah, what I was going to mention is that, um, first of all, Mr. Schnall, thank you for that information again. Uh, secondly, we did vote on this. We made a recommendation to the governing body, the City Council. Um, with this information, when, uh, they decide to put that on the agenda, I think that all of this information, along any commentary or how the motion was made, that we advanced forward, the City Council, governing body, will be able to take all those things in account. And they would also, like the public, have the opportunity to review this meeting along with Mr. Schnall's comments and anything else that the city provides. Uh, but we have moved that forward. That, uh, again, that zoning review item as an example, uh, short-term rentals, uh, move forward. So now it's in their hands after our recommendation. Uh, I sure, like, as I mentioned, sure we can discuss it, but I would, uh, I'm not sure what other commissioners think, but I want to make sure that we keep our processes clean. So once we advance and we have motions and we move them forward, that there are already any actions or modifications that need to be made are made at that level, since we already advanced it forward.
And I, I do believe, Mr. Chairman, that, um, the other comments or recommendations made at the November 5th meeting, Mr. Rapley did incorporate into the final version of the, or what is right now the final version, of the, um, short-term rental, um, ordinance as approved by the commission for recommendation to the City Council. Um, in addition, um, to it ultimately being on a future agenda of the City Council, uh, the local government code in Chapter 211 does require that the City Council also hold a public hearing on the entire zoning ordinance, whether it's just the short-term rental part or the entire ordinance that has gone through review, um, first by the Zoning Review Committee, and then by the prior zoning commission, and then by your zoning commission, this zoning commission. Um, and so the other document that was circulated by Mr. Rapley is the entire red line showing all of the proposed changes that have been approved, uh, piecemeal by this commission or a prior zoning commission. Um, and it would be appropriate under this agenda item for the commissioners, if they had questions or comments, to go ahead and make them. And ultimately, it would be appropriate, um, for the commission to either move this entire ordinance forward to the City Council or decide that this commission wants another look at various parts of it. Um, as you all will remember, um, the prior zoning commissions had pretty much covered, uh, to, to my understanding, what was acceptable to this commission in, in the areas other than, um, the home occupations and the short-term rentals. And you spent two or three meetings, uh, working with Mr. Rapley and with me on what y'all were looking for on home occupations. There was a lot of input from Ms. Baker and Ms. Pena on that, as I recall. And then I think everyone, Mr. Herman, the chairman, Ms. Baker, Ms. Pena, Mr. Booth, and Mr. Herndon, who's left, um, all had various recommendations which we tried to incorporate um, into the, uh, proposed final version of the short-term rental ordinance. Um, but, um, putting on my hat as the retired chair of the Zoning Review Committee, we concluded our work three or four city managers ago. And it would be appropriate to move this forward, to get it to the City Council, um, when you all are comfortable doing so, but frankly, sooner rather than later. Thank you.
So, and like, Mr. Schnall, in light of the Court of Appeals opinion, if it does go up to the Supreme Court, do you think that we have provided our city with an ordinance that will avoid them falling under an unconstitutional declaration? Because we've, we've put restrictions on how many people you can have per room and parking and things like that, and that, I thought, was in an effort to avoid having to say, "You can't have a wedding. You can't have a party."
What we have said in our ordinance, which is, I think, probably materially different than what Austin did, is simply reference existing ordinances, that, you know, you, you know, a short-term rental operator must be in compliance with the zoning regulations, um, with, um, our, our ordinances on, uh, the, from the International Building Property Management Code, or, excuse me, Property Maintenance Code in regard to occupancy, um, a future hotel occupancy tax ordinance, um, the swimming pool barrier requirements from the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, the parking provisions in Chapter 44 of our ordinances, the nuisance provisions in Chapter 26, our garbage collection ordinance. Um, all of those are spelled out. Um, and in addition, uh, primarily in response to the difficult situation that I think we all sympathize with, that Mr. Carter and the other residents of South Winston Lane have described, um, in October of last year, the council did adopt a broader, more, uh, enforceable, um, amendment to the nuisance ordinance that would allow the city, um, if there were multiple offenses... to the nuisance ordinance that would allow the city, if there were multiple offenses, to declare a property a nuisance generating property and require the owner to post a bond, among other things. And so the city has responded to that concern through the ordinances. My direct answer to your question is no. I do not think with that provision I just read that prohibits weddings and other similar events in any short-term rental. I do not think that will pass constitutional muster. I am mildly concerned about the occupancy limits, but the Austin Court didn't directly say those were illegal. They came close. They came close, but they didn't quite say that. Whoever would bring this case to the Supreme Court, which probably would be the city of Austin, whose ordinance was partially struck down, will frame the argument before the court. And, you know, my thinking is they will try to preserve as much of the ordinance as they can. The Austin Court of Appeals decision is 18 pages long. That's long for an appellate court decision. It's not, for a Court of Appeals decision, that's long. Not for a Supreme Court decision, but for a Court of Appeals decision, an 18-page opinion is long. And it was written by the chief judge, the chief justice of that court. Notwithstanding that, our community is different from Austin. Our community is different from almost every other community. And we have the right, I think the city has the right, to put whatever reasonable restrictions it thinks is appropriate in place. And if folks are unhappy or dissatisfied, there are methodologies for them to air those grievances. But I, I do have a concern about the right-of-assembly language. As much as I sympathize with the, the neighbors who had to put up for far too long with a very difficult and unpleasant situation, we all have to abide by the rules that have been set for us by the constitutions. So it's not our place to decide what the court would, or should, or could do. I think it's the place of this commission to decide what's right for our community. If you want to keep in place this restriction against weddings and similar events in short-term rental properties that are in the residential districts, it would be valuable to state why and to, to show that the commission and the governing body respectively, you know, thought about this and felt that, whether it was because of the nature of the neighborhood, because it's because the streets are so narrow, the streets are not curbed, the streets don't have sidewalks, and things like that, make it difficult to manage from a public safety standpoint. An event that would have 30, or I think Mr. Castagnana said, 20, JD, thank you, it'd be a lot easier for me to pronounce, sir. I did not write down the spelling, and I lost without that. But, you know, on this, on my street, 25 or, or, or 50 cars parked, you can't get down the street. I mean, we had an event when my son was in high school, we had 20 kids. Police came and asked us to move cars so they were parked in my driveway and get as many cars off the street as possible. And that was probably 18 or 20 cars. And most of the streets in Castle Hills, especially north of Loop 410, are narrow streets, not paved, and with no sidewalks. That could justify a reasonable restriction against someone having a large event. I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with us saying how many people can be in one of these rental homes, and Ms. Smith spoke to that already this evening. The Austin Court did make some comments about that, but they did not make a definitive finding that any restriction of that kind would not work. They came close in the, in the, in the part where they talked about the, the getting rid of the, of declaring unconstitutional, the provision that said that if it wasn't owner occupied, it had to basically go out of business in five years. And we don't have that provision here. That was something that was discussed, I think, by the previous zoning commission and perhaps also by this zoning commission, and there really wasn't a sense that that was necessary or appropriate in our community.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. Mark and Ryan, you were, a couple of, I guess, residents had, had ref, made reference to you or in correlation with the city of sorts. Under this agenda item, I'd like to, to ask if you are, their communications on record with the city, so that we have those?
Well, in particular with Mr. Castrohan's issue, I was intimately involved, as well as Mr. Zamiron and our outside attorney, on violations that occurred at this property over time.
Okay.
And so we, we have documented, Mr. Zamiron brought cases to municipal court. And again, we had engaged our, our municipal court outside attorney with, with representatives from Mr. Castrohan on this matter. And so, again, at the end of the day, it was since resolved. The nuisance ordinance that was in effect was a little early, because I think it was just nearly, I think it was adopted, Louis, I think, just a few months in, when some of the problems that started racking up as far as violations at this particular property occurred. But at the end of the day, now that this is fully in place, and as Mr. Schnall mentioned, stipulated in the ordinance under Chapter 26, I think Ms. Baker had asked us to categorize that as nuisances, pretty much covers and gives us that ordinance for an enforcement tool moving forward. But in regards to that particular property, we've, have documentation as far as what transpired there.
Okay. And again, under this particular agenda item, I asked that question, and again, to share with the commissioners, that as we move forward and looking at anything else, that as we have with other scenarios, that if we need to pull some information as some reference points to take from in our reviews, to make recommendations, that we do have that information and data going forward. So thank you very much. I just wanted to double-check on that for this commission. Thank you. Commissioners, any other communication? Anyone? I'd like to also remind, and again, samples only, it's just I, you know, when someone's looking to make a motion, or whatever it may be, just again, at the very beginning, when many of us were nominated and put on this commission, anyway, sample, as I move to approve, not approve, take no action, table two, a particular date, or when, a particular month, then you could read that particular agenda item. And again, this is only a sample to avoid any stress or confusion, as everyone up here trying to do the best we can for our residents as making recommendations as a commission. But again, I'd like to state that each commissioner can decide on their own method. So we are on agenda item number four. I can reread it again, or anyone else?
Chairman, can I make a point on what Mr. Schnall had mentioned? About moving this?
Hang, hang on one second, Ryan.
Yes, Chairman, as, as far as moving this forward to council, and as Mr. Schnall alluded to, the posting requirements, at the last meeting, I went through and consolidated the Chapter 50 and incorporated short-term as advised by this, this zoning commission. And then I took care of all the posting requirements in case that you did want to move this forward for the next council meeting on December 10th, because I got the idea that you were at a point where you're ready to not only advance the short-term rental, but incorporate it into Chapter 50, which I did, make the necessary changes as redlined in this entire document, and ready for, you know, council's eventual review at this point.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any communications from commissioners?
I can't hear myself when I put this thing on, but I'll try. I think a lot of the concerns that you guys have raised tonight have been addressed in the, in the draft that's presented tonight here. I think a very important aspect of all this is the nuisance, nuisance ordinance that was passed previously. And I don't know if you want to get up and tell them a little bit more about the, the arm at which you have to take care of things that do get out of, out of hand. That way, it will give these people some kind of a frame of reference to what, would you be willing to do that? Just tell them what's different from now versus before. This guy's really good about this stuff, by the way, so.
I actually reversed myself backward and forward on what you're asking about today. So basically, what we did as a result of-
Excuse me. You might introduce yourself to everyone.
Okay, my name is Louis Zamiron. I'm the code compliance officer, and I'm also the assist, the interim assistant to the city manager. And I'm, got some awareness of the situation that occurred on, on South Winston Lane. Because of this particular situation and other ongoing situations within, within the code realm, it was, my suggestion is also the suggestion of the outside attorney, that we get together something that other cities had, having to do with nuisance generating properties. And so that was addressed, and that was passed in October of last year. And basically, this gives me, gives the code officer, whoever my replacement will be, if I do get this position.
Excuse me one second, Mr. Zamiron. Can everybody, the audience here, okay? I know that this was, okay. I just want to make sure, because Mr. Commissioner Herman wanted to make sure that everybody-
Yeah, I think it's important, and now, I, and the reason I, I'd like to preface this by, the reason I think it's important that he kind of describes the difference between what, what, the city didn't have much of an ability to do a whole lot about the complaints that you people have raised, previous to what he's fixing to describe to you. So now that we have an arm in which to, to, you know, get these people in trouble for breaking noise violations and things like that, he will explain the differences. So I think it will address a lot of your concerns, based on what he's saying.
So succinctly, the thing was, Joe, there was never really like a three strikes, if you will, a three strikes and you're out kind of ordinance, and there is now. It's three strikes within 60 days and a certain provision occurs, certain penalties occur. Seven within six months and those penalties occur. So the three is not the net, the seven is the net, and you have a short time in which that occurs. Prior to that, if we had a three-strikes-you're-out type situation, or I had three calls to a particular property, it was the same process. They would get a letter of violation, they would come to court, they would come to some agreement with a prosecuting attorney, whether that was followed through or not, it's really irrelevant, that's where the process ended. And if the situation reared its ugly head again, then I would move again, down the same path, over and over and over, ad nauseam. Things aren't getting fixed, there doesn't seem to be a penalty for the, for the, the recidivism on this particular type of, of violation. And so the outside attorney decided that we probably needed this. So when we did get together and craft this, and it was passed by the governing body last year, there's provisions in that, that nuisance generating code now, that make it rather poignant to the property owner that that type of behavior will stop, and it's sooner rather than later. And it does hit the property owner who is generating or allowing those nuisances to be generated, it hits him or counts, quite frankly. And so I think, at least my feeling is, that if this ever rises to the level to where this ordinance needs to be used, it'll catch the attention of the individual who owns their property in short order.
Do you have the ability to stop it now versus before you didn't? Or is this something where they're just going to get caught in an endless cycle where there's no real penalties?
Well, sir, honestly, I can't answer that, because 20 years as a police officer, one thing I did learn is that you cannot modify human behavior. So they're going to do whatever they want to do, and it doesn't matter what the cost. If they have a high tolerance for pain, and they don't mind paying arbitrarily, let's just say $10,000, then that behavior's going to continue. Do I have the mechanisms in which to catch someone's attention, perhaps a little bit more? The answer is definitely, definitely. You don't want that uncomfortable, you don't want to cross that uncomfortable threshold, no matter who you are. You could be an up-and-up person who's running a nice Airbnb, who just happens to get a bad roll of the dice three times in 60 days, but it still kind of gets your attention.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. I'm very concerned about my neighbor's well-being and them living comfortably and peaceably in their homes. I want them to know that this particular issue was pretty much decided before this commission took office. We're just modifying what the previous commission had discussed and had decided upon. We're just amending and making stricter rules. But after hearing y'all tonight, my heart goes out to you, because I wouldn't want to be in your situation. I would not want to be woken up in the middle of the night, not even once a year. And my concern is, and it's totally out of our hands, is that when you make the phone call to the police department and they go out there, that there are repercussions, that people get arrested, and that they go to court, and their, and their case is not dismissed. You know, I've had a situation several years in the past where we reported a neighbor, and he came over here and, I mean, it took years to get him, to get them to send him a letter. And then when they did, and he came over here, he talked his way out of it. So how, what did that get us? I mean, maybe we should develop a committee where the B&amp;B owners meet with the police chief and discuss their concerns with the police chief, and maybe attacking it from that side. But I don't think that we constitutionally have the right to prohibit them from having an Airbnb. And so our hands are, are pretty much tied, but don't think that we're sitting up here not caring and not listening, because we are definitely listening, and we all care. We would not want to be in your shoes.
I think, sorry, I think it's important to note that, right now, there's no law. And so that you're experiencing, Mr. Carter, there's no law, there's no ordinance, there's nothing, we have-
Mister, I don't think you can engage someone, just, just so you know.
Oh, in generalities, okay. So in light of what our code enforcement officer has said, you know, we now have new ordinances that are in place, right now, we're trying to draft the best short-term rental ordinance that we can, based on feedback that we've got from other cities, based on feedback from residents, trying to make them as advantageous to the homeowner that is wanting to rent their home out short-term. You know, we're, I think we're, we're there, to be honest. I think we've worked on this really hard. But I think it is just important to note that, right now, I think it's more helpful to the city to have ordinances in place for everyone's concerns. I think it addresses everyone's, whether it's someone that's for or against, because they're doing it anyway. And I think that we, we're in a, we're in a different kind of world now. So we have, we have to make, we have to play the hand we're dealt, and we know that people are doing them anyway. So I think it's better for us to have ordinances in place that, that set the rules. That way, if they are broken, there's a penalty for it.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Again, I just wanted to reiterate, we did have a vote on that, a motion was made, et cetera, last, we did miss you, last meeting, Commissioner Herman, I think, who had led, I think there was a motion led by Ms. Baker, and we thank you, Commissioner Baker, and seconded by Commissioner Peña regarding that. So any additional information, should anybody else happen to hear the audio or video of this, and I state that as any of the public or the governing body, when that is put on the agenda by the city council and the governing body, hopefully, they will make some time to go ahead and review, or there's documentation, additional documentation produced as they make a decision for the city of Castle Hills. So thank you very much, Commissioner Herman. So, thank you very much, Commissioner Herman. Commissioners, anybody else on this particular agenda item? Again, it's discussion and possible action.
I'd like to move this draft document forward as it's presented, and ask that it be moved forward for the city council's consideration.
Commissioners, would that be okay? Yes, Mr. Carter?
As I said earlier, I haven't seen or been able to look at it. I'm a very detailed person. The 22 years that I've known this gentleman here, Mr. Schnall, he's always had his head screwed on tight, and he's run a tight ship. All of the things that he was just talking about, are those in this amendment? Like, the lanes that we live on that are 21 feet and not 31 feet, all that's in there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm good.
There's a whole list, just to be clear, I'm telling, or the...
And I wasn't sure if we could give you that or show you.
I think Mark...
Mr. Schnall, did you want to make some comments before we...
This, until, until, until this commission acts to do something, to, and Ms. Baker has made a motion, and we allowed Mr. Carter to make a point of order, but I think that before we go forward, it would be appropriate for the chair to see if there's a second to Ms. Baker's motion.
I'll second.
Okay. So Ms. Penya seconded Ms. Baker's motion. I think the answer to Mr. Carter's point of order is that the proposed short-term rental ordinance incorporates by reference the various provisions that were discussed in my previous presentation, and is amplified by our code enforcement officer in regard to Chapter 26 on nuisances. So our sign ordinance, our occupancy limitations from the International Property Maintenance Code, the future hotel occupancy tax, the swimming pool barrier requirements from the International Swimming Pool and Spa Code, which the city has adopted, the parking ordinances of the city, the garbage collection ordinance of the city, all of those are incorporated by reference into the short-term rental provision. And I think that's probably a more accurate response to Mr. Carter, because it doesn't say our roads are 20 feet paved, instead, and 60-foot right-of-way with 20 to 30 feet paved. But that's something that can be incorporated as part of findings by the city council when it acts formally on the recommendation that comes from this commission. Having been through this process before, as then the chairman of the zoning commission, I presented the zoning commission's recommendations on the revisions to Chapter, at that time, I think it was Chapter 31, it's now Chapter 50, over the course of two or three city council meetings. So the council did this council action and review in smaller pieces, rather than try and take the whole, and I didn't count the pages, and I don't know if Mr. Rapley has page numbers on here, 73. So it's a long ordinance. I'm assuming that the current city council will probably also take it up in chronological order, but probably not all at one time at one meeting. Could have a special meeting just for this purpose. Again, notice will be published, and of course, put on the website, and notice of a public hearing will be published, so that members of the public, both those who are in favor and those who are not in favor of anything in the amended ordinance, will have an opportunity to speak. And so I hope that information is helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. We do have a motion on the table, we have a first, we have a, we also have a second. All in favor? The time is approximately 8:27 PM. Agenda item number five. Discussion on potential additions to the recommended changes to Chapter 50 of the code of ordinances. Again, this was discussion, I think we just retired that at this point for the work that we've done on that. Any other comments? Again, commissioners, this is your time for open discussion.
Would we be allowed, Mr. Schnall, would we be allowed to assess, or, yeah, I guess the word's assess, a penalty for the homeowner that has had more than two offenses?
I'm looking to see if there is a penalty provision, or where there is a penalty provision, because I know there is one in the zoning ordinance. So let's see if we can find that quickly. Ah, Section 50-5. Anyone who fails to comply with any provisions of the zoning chapter, et cetera, et cetera, upon conviction is guilty of a misdemeanor and shall be fined as provided in Section 1.71 of the code of ordinances. I don't, do not have Section, or, Chapter 1, Section 17 of the, or Section 1.17 in front of me. Typically, that section would provide that the municipal judge has the discretion to set the fine. Certain zoning violations can be fined up to $2,000, although typically, the municipal court fines are in the range of $1 to $500. The judge can take into account multiple violations, but it's really discretionary with the municipal court judge. At a future meeting, the commission can put on an agenda, a specific concern about addressing the penalty provision, and that would be the appropriate time to do so. I think it would be important to let the public know specifically what the zoning commission is concerned about, give the public an opportunity to speak at a public hearing before this commission, and to help you all reach a decision. And I think the city manager can make a note that there may be a concern about having the commission at a future meeting examine the penalty provisions.
Thank you, Mr. Schnall. Any other commissioners' comments? I'd just like to recap a bit, and thank you all for all of your hard work and attention to details, as we do our very best to try to help our residents in the city of Castle Hills. Again, this zoning commission makes recommendations. That is, our role is to make recommendations to the governing body, the city council. So, again, I just want to say thank you, and all of our city team, so thank you, gentlemen, very much, and the communication from our residents. Nothing else I heard. Commissioners, I request a motion to adjourn, please. First?
Who wants it? Who wants it?
Got a first, I've got a second. The time is approximately 8:31. Thank you, everyone.